Moving to ordinances, we have ordinance thirteen fourteen in first reading this evening, approving the execution of an annexation agreement and the annexation of property contemplated thereby for the city of DeKalb-Linolee Iron Gate Development and approving zoning preliminary plans and granting related development approvals. I would note that Alderman Baker, who was on the prevailing side of defeating this motion at our last meeting, asked that the item be brought back for reconsideration. I would ask for a motion to reconsider it this morning.
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Baker, second by any of the remaining Aldermen.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fenuken. I'll ask for a roll call.
Alderman O'Leary? What is roll call for?
Do we need a roll call for reconsideration? I don't know that we do.
The roll call is not necessary for reconsideration, but with the controversial nature of this issue, I'd ask that we record it by roll call. So this roll call, Monica, is merely to reconsider the Iron Gate subdivision.
But if it were to fail, then I would lose my right of reconsideration. I object to a roll call.
I think the motion to reconsider is to reconsider the action that was taken. So if the motion to reconsider passes, the ordinance would pass on first reading.
We're not ready for that at this moment, are we?
I thought the motion to reconsider, Dean, merely brings the motion back. It rescinds the defeat at our last council meeting.
So you're contemplating a motion to reconsider just to... What is the motion reconsidering then?
To discuss the Iron Gate subdivision, which was defeated at first reading two weeks ago.
But I have a right to reconsider and reopen the discussion at this moment without a vote, which is what I've done. Am I wrong in that?
I'm just trying to understand what the motion is reconsidering if it's not reconsidering the action that was not approved at the last meeting.
That's correct.
As I understand reconsideration, which is what I've asked for, I've reconsidered, I've asked for it to be reconsidered, and now we're at that point that we were at the last meeting before the vote. Or do we have to take another step in order to start discussing? Well, we're in a vote for reconsidering. We're reconsidering now. If I... That's the way it's been the last thirteen years I've been here.
The motion for reconsideration typically would be, it's essentially a motion to have a new vote on what happened at the last meeting.
Which is the first reading of the ordinance, correct?
Correct. Right. So the motion for reconsideration has been made. If you have a vote on that right now, it's going to be a vote on that action, on whether or not it should pass on first reading. So you can have discussion on it, you could have a motion to postpone the reconsideration, or you could have a vote on it. But it would be a vote on that action.
So if we vote right now without discussion...
It would be a vote...
It would pass first reading without even talking about it.
If it...
And that's not my intention.
So let's move to discussion.
Is that fair enough? We're on the same page?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
No vote, whether it's roll call or voice at all? Not yet.
So at this point, the motion on ordinance thirteen fourteen, as I previously read, is on the floor and open for discussion.
Can I start?
Sure.
The reason that I asked for this to be reconsidered without pulling any of the other council people is that I took the initiative to find out if there was any chance that my reason for voting no on the first reading condition could ever be met. And I've received back an email from Mr. Pat Seltz on behalf of the Shodine Development that the important issue on no rentals had been addressed or would be addressed, and that, as I understand it, is wording that would have to be worked out later, legally, also get DARA involved at DARA's request when it ran by, made up by them, that they would agree to no rentals on the townhome portion of the development. I've withdrawn my demand that the houses can never be rented. Too many people have expressed how unfair that could be if somebody bought a house for, or had a house built for three hundred thousand and their job transferred them and their only option, because they weren't, a buyer maybe at that moment, would be to rent it while they're trying to sell it. That is where I'm coming from. I also understand, and we can hear from Alderman Naylor, that all of his concerns or most of them were in theory addressed as well.
Other discussion? Alderman Naylor?
I'll add, yes, that's correct. The concerns that I had expressed at the last meeting, I believe those eight or nine of them, has been addressed or responded to by the developer, by Mr. Pat Seltz, in a positive manner. And I am satisfied at this time with regards to the majority of those items. And I believe there's three of them that basically we concur that should be left up to the council to decide upon those items. Likewise, in reviewing the project, I believe, you know, this is one of the major economic impact to the community by developing the land up there as is proposed. It's incompatible with our comprehensive plan. Every year, we probably spend a million dollars, in fact, I think this year is probably in excess of a million dollars, trying to encourage development in the community, investment in the community, and you've heard that term a couple of times already this evening, as though possible the city turns away investment in the community. Here's a development firm that already has expressed an interest in the city and has brought in this investment in the community, but they have at least two other investments that the city is aware of and are in areas that the city would like to see developed. So, you know, we have to work together with this developer, and we have to do things jointly and as a common group, I guess. Something to say, I guess, easy said, you know, the developer, Shodine, needs the city, and the city needs that type of a developer and investor in the community. All of the issues that I raised were so much contrary to anti, I just wanted to make certain that all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted on a lot of the development issues that I've experienced over my past career, and that has brought the city problems or other cities problems, and I wanted to make certain that those were addressed upfront early on, prior to, rather than later on and after the fact. And I believe those concerns have now been adequately addressed, at least in my mind. Further, the city is not involved basically in any cost to this development, similarly what we may be providing other incentives to other types of investment in the community and developers out there. This is basically a development coming to the city without any cost, other than granted their staff time. There's been a fair amount of staff time over the past several years working out all the issues here, and I'm certain there's still a couple of issues probably need to be worked out before any finalization could be given. In addition, you know, we just completed and spent money preparing a housing plan in conjunction with the university, and that plan indicated, I guess, that we needed housing in the price ranges that this developer is proposing to build up there and is make a third, fourth, fifth, maybe, choice for interested builders out there that has funds or money to build that type of a home or that expensive of a home, to have an alternative choice other than maybe the one or two choices that we have here locally, as well as to compete with the choices that may be available in other communities nearby. With regards to the existing stock of housing lots within the city currently, yes, there's estimated upwards of three hundred, but there again, that's not a, relatively speaking, not very many lots. They're primarily on two major developments within the city, and once the academy returns, I'm certain those are going to go relatively fast as well. So we need to be prepared for that next thrust of housing needs out there, and particularly within the price ranges that are being proposed. As I said, it gives an added choice. I think also we need to be cognizant, in fact, to allow the free market price system to work and not to try and control the market out there. And so therefore, I would invite, I wish, I guess, by fellow council members, those that possibly do not look forward upon it, to reconsider and at least to allow the dialogue to continue for this development, which would be done if we could progress or proceed to a first reading of the ordinance. We can also postpone it, I guess, but then that's just putting the decision off and making everybody, unless we're going to allow the postponement, to allow staff to continue and work with the developer to work out the issues. I understand there is still an issue with you out there with the park district that yet has to be resolved, so probably some time could be used to look those issues out. But I would certainly encourage all the Aldermen to give it fair consideration, and I would like to see it moved basically to a first reading this evening, and then we could continue a second reading at whatever time it would take to work out all the remaining issues.
Thank you, Ron. Before turning, I see Alderman Baker running to speak a second time. Before turning to that, I do have a speaker request, and I'd like to recognize that first. Mac McIntyre? And I apologize, Mac. I should have turned to that before we turned to discussion.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. And thanks for Dave Baker reconsidering this issue. I don't have a dog in the race. I really don't care if it passes or it doesn't pass. If I was sitting in your chair, I'd vote for it, because I think the community needs a new construction EAV, and it's that simple. When the referendum for the school district passed, all the numbers that the bond salesmen put together to keep our debt repayment at two hundred and seventy dollars for the typical hundred and eighty thousand dollar home in DeKalb at the time was based on DeKalb experiencing sixty million dollars a year in new construction, twenty million dollars a year in new construction EAV. We've fallen way flat at that. And what happens then is that repayment schedule really begins to escalate. And I believe in four or five years, and I know some council members have seen these charts, the debt portion, which is a significant portion of the school, could triple. You could see property taxes double. So if you're not going to go with this plan, and I quite, I clearly remember the city council endorsing the referendum and saying we needed to do this, so we're all in it together. And if we're not going to allow new construction to take place, if we're going to go against our comprehensive plan, which clearly calls for that development out there, then perhaps you could give the taxpayers what your Plan B is. What's going to happen to their tax bill? Now, I know that only a small portion of the property tax goes to the city, but if that property tax takes off like that, there's not going to be anyone left to pay those taxes. The city will be in a lot of trouble. So if it's not going to move forward, please tell us Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. Other discussion? Alderman Baker?
I do want to hear from everyone, but I want to throw some facts out to be thought about as we hear from everyone. There's two choices here. We move to postpone because we feel that only five people want to go forward, and then part A to that postponement would be to direct staff to either limit their time to working with the Shodine project in regards to attending or working with the school district, or, excuse me, the park district, because the bike paths need to be altered somewhat and then the maintenance thereof. I don't know if that will end up in a deadlock, but that discussion, I've been told, can only take place with our skilled staff involved, so that it doesn't take years of going back and forth, what can we do? And that would be one of the important things. The other important thing is that we've ordered our staff not to spend any more time on this. There's been more spent on it, but since we're basically at the end zone of everything that we ask for, they have said they're willing to do, now is the time to limit our staff, I think, maybe sixty days, was that? I heard some suggestions, not sure who I talked to, may be enough time to work out those details. But I certainly think that one of the things that we have to consider was the misnomer that I believe to be true of some number of four hundred, maybe four hundred and fifty empty lots. Derek, certainly, I don't know if you have it ready for tonight, but we're going to need, as a council, a complete breakdown before we get to second reading on just the inventory in our city. I was on the council when we made these decisions every step of the way, when we brought in as small of developments as thirty and forty houses, and we had a pretty good handle, we thought, on how many lots were ready for permit, where a permit could be applied tomorrow and all the infrastructure was in. We had a pretty good idea on how many lots are just basically lines on a plat, and it's just a, basically a field that may even be being found for, we know. And the theoretical number of lots that could be available that are accepted and then extended to the city is one number. Another number is one that may show a side lot or that has been accepted as a side lot to somebody in the infill, not small development, but within the city, that maybe they personally pull on that lot, maybe they put a gazebo, maybe their garden is there, and no time soon is it logical that that lot would ever be for a house. And if that number, actually some number less than three hundred or south even to two fifty, I can tell from experience that that's less than a year's supply of logical sales if it was two hundred and fifty lots ready to permit tomorrow. And I posed this question to many people as I was trying to figure out where we want to go, and I said, if you had three hundred thousand dollars and you were going to sell your existing house and you wanted to step up, where would you go and build that house? And I've got people thinking about that. Of course, the best answer and the consistent one is, well, I want to stay in DeKalb, I want to build in DeKalb. And I am trying to keep it up in mind, but I've been told something that I didn't catch before these last few weeks of trying to figure out what to do with this, that the city, for an annexation fee, will receive an immediate check for six hundred thousand dollars, and there's a nice payment towards the staff time of investment. And I think the school district gets an immediate check for six hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm not going to speak for the school district. Those are some of the numbers I've heard. But certainly, as we decide whether this is an action that's going to end up in postponement because only five people want to go forward, or whether it has a chance of first reading and basically agreeing with all of those details to be codified, that's what I'd like to hear from everybody as we go around.
Okay. And before we move to other Alderman comments, I'd like to acknowledge that there have been pro and con opinions expressed from the community regarding this proposed development. I personally see benefit to the overall community of moderate controlled growth of reasonably designed residential development within stage growth. Iron Gate represents an opportunity for such a development. I encourage Alderman's approval this evening of this motion. We, as Alderman Baker indicates, we need a super majority vote by city council to move this through first reading and give staff and the developer authorization to move toward compromise resolution on the issues remaining. Discussion between Park District and Shodine has been delayed due to vacation schedule of Park District personnel, but my understanding is that those negotiations will continue. I ask that we only approve first reading if there is strength and resolve by council members to commit to approval at second reading with all the remaining issues resolved. Otherwise, I recommend we ask for a motion to postpone.
I second the postpone.
Well, I'm not at that point, Monica. What I'd like to do is turn to other Alderman's opinions. As Alderman Baker has expressed, we'd like to find out where other Aldermen stand on the issue. Comments? Alderman Snell?
Well, the last time I supported this project, and I still do, I guess, as I think about it, if you're not in favor of new homes and new development, which has been in our comprehensive plan, then it's also hard to encourage the city council to encourage private development, new businesses and new jobs, because they do go hand in hand. And this is a twenty-plus-year project. This is not something that you flip a switch and tomorrow we have all this, these new lots out there. This is a project that takes time, and in this economy, housing goes in cycles, and I think we need to be prepared for the next cycle, and this is, you know, integrated with our comprehensive plan.
I've heard a lot of comments, and I've, again, I've made very clear that I've gone back and forth on this issue and that I feel like I really understand both sides of it. Referring specifically to Bob's comments, while I understand the free market is important and I understand that it's not necessarily our job to get involved in that market, and that we do need to be seen as business friendly, I think that there's always a second side of that issue in terms of what council perceives as necessary for our community. I mean, if a hundred brand-new pornography studios came to DeKalb looking to open a business here, we would be very business unfriendly, I would hope. And that's, again, when we're looking at different projects, to say that we have to do all or none, I think is a bit of a misnomer. In terms of Alderman Naylor's statements, I heard some scary things down there. We need Shodine. That's a scary thought. I don't know if, I realize that they have several projects that they've brought to DeKalb. I realize they own quite a bit of land in our community. I also realize that it's our job as council members to make sure, again, that this project makes sense. And to say because one developer is the only one right now that we have, that we need them, I think is a scary road to go down. In addition, some of the comments I've heard, that three hundred is not many open lots. That's a hundred and fifty year supply at our current trends. That's a lot of empty lots. As Alderman Baker has mentioned before at meetings, if and when we get to a point that this is necessary, that a housing development or subdevelopment or even a smaller plan is necessary, we can bring this back in thirty, sixty, ninety days and get it done. That's not a difficult process once we have everything in place, but to rush it through now because we have it on the table, I think is a bit foolish in this time, at this time. We've gone around and around in this on circles. We've, again, we've said things like, it's in our comprehensive plan, but our comprehensive plan hasn't been rewritten in years, and we know we're going through a comprehensive plan rewrite. We know that comprehensive plan was written in a time that was a very different boom time for our community, and it may have made sense then. Before we have those basic policies reset and we decide where we want to go, it's silly to make decisions when we all know that comprehensive plan is outdated at best. I also heard Alderman Naylor say that we need, that the housing study demonstrated we needed this housing. I very clearly remember at the meeting that those people that put together that housing study were very careful to mention that the numbers didn't necessarily indicate a need for this housing, but that there was a small subsection of the market that could possibly potentially be able to afford those homes. That study didn't show that there was need, or that there was desire, or that there was any plan if we had a neighborhood in the works for someone that's in the community to buy those homes, only that there were people in the age or in the age and income range that potentially may be interested. So I think, again, it's a bit of a misnomer to state as fact that that housing study presented those ideas, but I very much feel that they didn't. What I see, again, of this whole process, and I've been part of it for the last two years, through two different councils, through two different mayors, through two different city managers at this point, is, again, we keep bringing this up when it's not ready. Again, there's still questions unanswered, and we're pushing it to a vote again tonight. And unfortunately, when you do that, you get the results that we continue to have, where there's people willing to vote no, where there's people that aren't sure in the plan, where there's people that aren't comfortable moving forward with the plan. And yet again, because of circumstances, we have to bring it up again tonight and spend another hour of time of all these people in the audience, of all of our staff sitting in the chairs, of all of us up here. Unfortunately, a lot of this has been caused by the developers' inability to get us a finished product. We've asked, and they've played games. We've told them what our requirements are going to be, and up until now, they either haven't answered or have tried to sidestep many of those. We've brought it to vote, and it's been voted down. Before we even consider bringing this back up and taking this vote, because again, I'm sure as the developer knows, I'm sure as all we know, if we take this vote tonight and it's a no vote, it's over, it's done. There's no more of this. We've already instructed staff not to spend any time on it. If we again come up with a no vote, it's going to be pretty apparent the council doesn't have the direction of doing this. And pushing this vote tonight, I would very much caution you against it, because this would be a dumb deal if it gets a no vote. And I think everybody here understands that, and that's why I would very comfortably support that we postpone it until, at the very least, the project is 100% done to the specifications we sent out, the park district is taken care of, the private property owners' issues are taken care of, the Aldermen's positions are taken care of, so we can go do a very quick straight up or down, up or down, no, yes or no vote on the entire package as it's to be approved, not piecemeal, not any more games, not any more parts, not any more, we'll do it in first reading and maybe they'll come back to the answer second reading. Either get it done or quit wasting my time, quit wasting the community's time, quit wasting our staff's time.
Alderman, do you care if I comment?
Well, I'm in support of the project. I certainly understand Oliver Jacobson's position on a number of those items, and certainly I would like to have it where, as you said, all the Is were dotted and the Ts were crossed. I guess my question would be, Dean, since this is a reconsideration, what happens with a postponement? How does that affect that?
If you move to postpone the reconsideration, the, I think going to one of the comments that was made earlier, the only way that that changes anything is if you direct staff to work on this again and try and, for example, amend the annexation agreement to address Alderman Baker, Alderman Naylor's comments, to work with the park district and get the park plan revised. As we had presented this to you at your last meeting, what we said was, contemplated on first reading, assuming that all of those issues have been satisfactorily resolved, and it did not pass. So that approach obviously didn't work. If you want time to think about this further and want to see the penultimate finished product, then I think the mechanism to do that would be a motion to reconsider, motion to postpone the reconsideration. We would want to pick a date and time certain, a future city council meeting to bring that back at, coupled with the direction of staff to update the annexation agreement and documents and work with the park district, and I guess, running property owners to resolve any of the pending issues that have been identified, so it could be brought back in that complete fashion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman, do you have further comment?
Well, more of a question, and maybe addressed to Derek. Derek, if staff was directed to get re-involved, what kind of a timeline are we looking at? When would you recommend a date for reconsideration?
My best guess, after hearing what I've heard this evening, shared with fellow council members and the audience, is that some of those issues have been addressed. So candidly, I'd have to convene with the developer and with the Park District just to see what issues still remain. The 60 days that was offered up at the very beginning of this discussion seems reasonable, and I think we could work towards that end.
All right, so you're suggesting then the first council meeting of October?
That would make sense. I mean, I think that's reasonable enough time to work through that and revise plans if need be, to try to get everybody on the same page.
Okay, and then one other question, you know, we've heard a lot of numbers bounced around about how many buildable lots are available in DeKalb, not just vacant, but buildable, and where do you peg that number to be right now? What's your definition of buildable? Well, I think you mentioned earlier, like, somebody has it as a side yard or a gazebo on it, that's not a buildable lot, or it's too small for a home, and things of those nature. That's what we need to break down. That's a complicated.
Is planted with curb and gutter?
Well, I'll let Derek define that for me, please.
Considering the number that's been used, the 300 lots vacant and buildable, my comfort level at this point would be to stick with 300. Now, as you begin analyzing scenarios and situations, you're absolutely correct in assuming and asserting that most of those lots exist in very, in two prominent locations in the community, and then you have intermixed, isolated lots that exist in the traditional parts of town and other places in DeKalb. So if I'm going to pinpoint a number, it's probably less than 300, but by the next meeting, I will certainly have it all highlighted and itemized, and if I can offer it before, then I certainly will.
Okay. And if I may, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and offer a motion to postpone until the first meeting in October.
Okay. Monica, do you like comment, or would you like to say the motion?
Alderman Fanouk, did that, as previously discussed, does that include a direction to continue to work on it?
Yes, it does. I'm sorry. If, how would you like me to flesh that out, Dean?
I think it would just be a motion to postpone the motion reconsidered in the first meeting in October with the direction of staff to work on updating the documents and resolving the pending issues.
Thank you for those words. We'll use that.
I'd really like to have heard from Alderman Lash before we consider the postponement versus the first reading. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm still in the same place I was and have been. You know, we can, we can go back and forth about whether we need new houses or not. I am with Alderman Jacobson in that I do see both sides of that issue. I also echo his concerns with being very careful about what the numbers from the housing study tell us. I remember that they said that they just used a basic formula of three times household income. I said at the last meeting, my husband and I are in the process of buying a house right now, and based on that very, very simple formula, we are buying about $60,000 less house than that formula says we can afford. But when we look at our monthly budget, we are right at what we can afford. So I think we have to be very, very careful with overinterpreting that housing study number. You know, as far as this specific development, those same eight or nine issues that Ron has brought forward, he has brought forward every single time this has come before us, the exact same list, every single time, and it took us saying an absolute no and voting it down for the, for them to come back and, to quote Derek, fix some of those issues. And I think, you know, to echo what Alderman Jacobson said, I think it's a waste of our time to keep going through this and coming back to the same issues over and over and over again. One of the issues in here that's the Park District issue is who's responsible for the bike path, and I remember discussing that no less than three times, and it still hasn't been resolved. And I think there's just a lot of fatigue of going through the same issues over and over again.
And I'd like to add to that, that it's not our staff's job to fix those problems. We have, as the council, have directed the developer to take care of these things, and I understand that staff has put copious amounts of time into making those meetings happen, into working those things through, and those things, that's up for the developer to do. If he wants to build here, he needs to get up and do the bare minimum to meet what we're asking. It's not up for our staff to continue to pour their hearts and souls into this when the developer clearly either isn't following directions, isn't listening to directions, or just doesn't care.
Well, I would offer, Alderman Jacobson, that the developer has listened to the currently seated council, has taken the list that was identified at our last meeting, has worked that down significantly. The one issue that, as I indicated, that is open, was outside their control, it was on a conflict with vacation schedules from the Park District. I would ask a motion to extend the meeting beyond 9:00. So moved by Alderman Jacobson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those same sign. Okay. Alderman O'Leary, did you want comment beyond the second to postpone?
No, I don't.
And we have the date of October 14th, Seth?
12th or 14th.
It's the?
14th.
October 14th. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I respond? Just some comments. Again, when we first brought this up at our last council meeting, we knew that there were outstanding issues. We did not work all those things out. We did this whole presentation because we wanted to update the council as to where we were, because it has not been discussed for months, and we had a new mayor, new council. The direction we're seeking was, do you want staff to try to work this out, the Park District, School District, the developer, and everyone else? That was the direction we were seeking. Okay, so, and the direction was given. Now, when you say that staff should not be involved with this, well, I can understand that, but the issue is there's some issues from the council. We are representing the city council and the mayor in these discussions, so hence why we are involved. Again, so there's a motion on the floor, but we are, as staff, to sit in direction. Do you want us to try to work out these issues? That's really all we're looking for. Do you want us to work it out?
Alderman Baker?
Alderman Jacobson, you're echoing my concerns that happened at the last meeting, where I was definitely an absolute no way, not just a no. And I agree that there was a long list of things that it didn't look like they were going to budge on, but the ship sailed, and now we've tossed in a lifeboat. If we postpone this, it has to be to allow staff to finish the deal, because as far as I understand it, all the concessions that Alderman Naylor expected and didn't see the movement have been met, including Normal Road having storm sewer, curb, gutter. We're talking probably millions of dollars in concessions that just got accomplished. Credit it to whatever you feel is important, but right now, the deal is done. We just have to have the attorneys and staff work out the details. Now, there may be a couple of kinks that come up in those details, which we'll have to deal with in 60 days, but I hope that it all gets worked out, including dollars input on the no rentals. That is going to be a tough one, I've been told, on just how to word that, so everybody feels it's fair. And of course, we as a council could come up with something that encompasses the whole city if we don't like the wording, but, you know, if, it appears to me that we've got five votes. We only need five votes to direct staff to go ahead and finish this deal before it comes back. But careful what you wish for in all the things that you guys have asked for, don't come up with a bunch of new ones in 60 days and throw it back, I hope. But if there is some tweaking to be done, let's let the staff know about it during this period, so we try to have a finished product when it comes back.
Alderman Fanouk?
Just one more thing, you know, we've all sat up here and kind of put words in Chodeen's mouth. I noticed that there is a representative. I'd like him to maybe come up and speak to some of the issues that we've tried to address tonight, and just have him give some confirmation of what we've been saying up here.
Alderman Lash?
I just wanted to comment on something that Alderman Baker said, that, an example that you brought up, that Normal Road had been fixed, and if you look in our memo, it actually says that it's shown without curb and council direction is sought. That's, that's an outstanding.
That's why we need, yes, I agree. Well, it's, Alderman Naylor indicated that all those issues were addressed.
If I may, I can address that.
Go ahead, Derek.
Specifically, the direction at the last meeting was not to work on this project, and so I took the literal direction from council, and so you have the same memo from the previous meeting, meaning there wasn't any time spent to it. So as I understand, there's other conversations, or at least Alderman Baker's aware of Alderman Naylor's concerns being met. I would like to know of those, but that wouldn't have been highlighted in the memo, because staff was not aware of that.
I would note, Alderman Jacobson, in the comprehensive plan, the portion of that comprehensive plan that we're considering at this point is residential housing north of the high school. And I think, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, but I hear no movement against that development, that the area north of the high school is intended to be residential. And therefore, I would contend that the comprehensive plan is in consideration, and we are within the parameters of that comprehensive plan. Do, what are your wishes? Do you, do you want the motion in front of us called? Do you want to hear from the developer at this point?
Well, clarification, does that motion include on directing staff to get involved to?
Yes.
Finish everything?
Yes.
The movement and the second both indicated that that was certain, yes.
Okay. I think probably hearing from the developer was the question. I mean, now would be the time for them to speak and address issues like that were important, like, did things get worked out yet with the Heinisch family and the drainage, and what their intent on this is.
Dave, would you like to address those, please?
David Patzelt, 17 North, First Street, Geneva, Illinois, from the Chodeen Group. I concur with Rudy's comments and reiterate it by Derek. Some of the issues or the questions or points raised by Ron Naylor were actually questions raised by staff, asking the council, what do we do? As an example, the park pads, you raised a question about the recreational pads, currently written in the annexation agreement, we're asking staff, and we are open to any of the three suggestions. A, does the homeowners association maintain the paths? We're willing to do that. B, does the organization or property owner where the path sits, do they maintain the path? We're open to that. Or C, it's been suggested that the Park District maintain all of the paths. We're open to that. We don't know, we've written the document that says we're open to all of those three. By pointing the finger to the developer and saying, "You, developer, go get it worked out," I can't tell the Park District to maintain the paths if they don't want to. We need your feedback as to what you, the council, want. Another one was the storm sewer on Normal Road. We can build a road that has no frontage against any property paying significant improvement tax dollars. Bethany Road goes from Annie Glidden to Second Street, has no curb and gutter. Normal Road could be similarly operated that same way, and the city would forego maintenance cost of curb and gutter, storm sewer. The question was to the council, what do you recommend or what do you want? It's easy for us to decide and bring quick discussion when Alderman Naylor says he recommends sewer or what, the curb and gutter. Easy. That's what we asked, we got the answer from one alderman. So I think you're pointing the finger at the developer, asking us to solve many of these items, when we're raising the question to staff and staff is raising the question to the council. Yes, many of the items, almost all of the items, have been worked out. You heard last week, 10, 15 minutes before the meeting, not trying to throw a stone at the Park District, they raised a question about the park, about the park being in agreement. We had emails from their former park director, city staff had emails from the park director that clearly state the board is in agreement with it. What more do I need than to have a letter or an email from the director, and your former city administrator has the email that says we're in agreement? We now understand, as a result of that meeting, that the Park District wasn't in agreement. Okay? Unfortunately, that has to get, that, things like that have to get worked out. That changed. It was news, news to us. The neighbor, the drainage issue, yes. It was clear, we thought it was clear to us that it was worked out. It has since been further clarified that we have sent a letter to the neighbor, the neighbor has agreed, we've agreed, so, yes, we're all in agreement. Did anything change? No, other than a letter going back and forth that both says, "We, we all agree." The only suggestion that I would offer is that you're suggesting pushing it to an October 14th meeting. I believe we're so close that in the event that if staff is, feels that all the details are worked out, can they bring it back before council prior to October 14? If staff feels that, that it is ready.
Dean, could we word that, no later than October 14? Depending on staff feeling ready to bring that back earlier?
If that's the motion and the second, yes.
Would that be acceptable? Would you be accepting that? Monica, would you accept that? Okay. So no later than October 14?
Are there any other questions that I might be able to answer or shed, shed some light on?
No, I think that's fine. Thank you, Dave. Okay, at this point, I will move to the motion in front of us. Liz, can you repeat that motion for us, please?
Alderman Fanouk made a motion to postpone to reconsider to no later than the first week in October, with staff to work out problems, seconded by Alderman O'Leary.
I think that's the first meeting, not the first week. Yes.
First meeting, sorry.
Thank you.
That's what it said, I just read wrong.
Thank you, Liz.
Wouldn't, shouldn't that be more clarified to say postponed to first reading, the ordinance, not postponed to reconsider? We just reconsidered.
Well, I'll let Dean weigh in on that.
I'm comfortable with how it's worded, and I think everybody is clear on?
As to the intent?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'll move to Rob Col. Liz?
Alderman O'Leary?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Lash?
No.
Snow?
Yes.
Naylor?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six i?
Thank you. I will move to approve, to hold a closed session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5 i LCS 120 slash 2.
Reports.
Pardon?
Are we doing reports?
Thank you. I apologize. Before recessing, I'll ask for reports. Communication. Alderman Jacobson?
Here comes the students. Obviously, it's that time of year where there'll be a lot more people in the roadways, about the roadways, on the sidewalks, in line at the grocery store, and in line pretty much everywhere else you go. Please be cognizant out there as drivers and pedestrians. Be safe in the neighborhood, especially around parks and crosswalks. especially around parks and crosswalks, and let's get this start off to a good, crime-free, quiet policing year.
Just to build on what Dave said, that August 20th, the Tuesday, there'll be a partial move-in of about 20% of the students, and the residence halls open completely on Thursday, August 22nd, so be prepared for that. Also want to just comment that this weekend, at the Ogilvy County Fairgrounds, is the Illinois Renewable Energy Fair, a lot of tips for conservation of energy and water. And then if you'll allow me a personal note, this Thursday is, I want to say happy anniversary to my wife, Rita, it's our 37th.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alderman Lash?
Got a few things. The students moving in, classes start on the 26th, so that's exciting. There are so many great things going on in our community this month. I just can't get over our library, Dee. You have done, you and your staff have just done so many remarkable things there, you know, with continuing the big read for so many years, and now this Harry Potter grant that you got, and there's so many wonderful programs going on there. You guys really do a remarkable job. There are two more concerts for the municipal band at Hopkins Park, they are really good, so encourage you to go to those. Also, another just absolutely fantastic local band, Jazz in Progress, is going to be playing at Hopkins Park on the 21st of August. Corn Fest is back-